Madam Speaker, it is my colleagues, Imino Trentai-Finkun, Alice Latour, and Gohan is back from recess. I understand my mic's not working, Clerk? I mean... Can you guys hear me? Hello? There you go. Madam Speaker, it is my colleagues, Imino Trentai-Finkun, Alice Latour, and Gohan is back from recess. When we last left last week, Friday, we had placed Bill 417-35COR down to the third reading file. We, colleagues, we have eight bills on the agenda going back to the top. And we hope our... Some of our colleagues have asked for a reiteration of how this is going to work. We will work until Tuesday afternoon at 2:00. So we're hoping that all the bills can be entertained. So at this time, looking at the agenda on page 5 of 8, we are back at item number 10, which is Bill 312-35LS as introduced by Senator Mary Torres. And I will ask Senator Torres, are you ready at this time? You may proceed.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Say your point of order.
When you called for a vote on that, on Friday, you called for a vote on a pass-on-file, which normally puts it at the bottom of the agenda. So I'm just... I prepared for all the other bills this weekend, yeah.
Senator Therese Terlahi, as we mentioned, when we talked about last week, Friday, just got through listening to the tape this morning. It was with the intention from the good author, when her bill was asked to be entertained, that it would be ready to just set aside, pass on files to set aside for Monday morning. Looking at the agenda as presented to me from the Clerk, Bill 312-35LS is on the top of the agenda. So at this time, I will yield to Senator Torres for your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The last time we spoke on Bill 312, several of my colleagues had some very good questions. And in the interest of giving everyone the opportunity to ask those questions, I move, notwithstanding the House rules, if we can resolve into the Committee of the Whole for Bill 312-35, so that the colleagues can ask questions of the Civil Service Commission. And perhaps, Madam Speaker, this can be done concurrently with the Committee of the Whole for Bill 340, if that is more convenient.
There has been a motion made. Clerk said the... I mean, Clerk has advised me that that is procedural. I am going to allow it. There has been a motion. Are there any objections? Is there an objection? Do you have a point of information?
Could you please clarify? Are we going to put that then together with Bill 340 on the agenda? And do a Committee of the Whole later? Or are you saying we're going to stop, talk on all bills?
Senator Therese, we were already on Bill 340. We were already in the Committee of the Whole. There are some technical items that need to be addressed. But we had already set aside both that based on the sponsor's request. So at this time, there is a motion just to go and resolve into the Committee of the Whole for Bill 312-35. It is a just motion. Are there any objections?
Speaker, if you can just clarify, are we going to do that now? Or are we going to do Committee of the Whole at the end of the rest of the agenda?
Madam, Senator Terlahi, with all due respect, I am entertaining the motion 312-35 as directed. Senator Lee, do you have a point of information? Senator Lee, do you have a point of information?
Madam Speaker, I just wanted to clarify. The motion was to resolve into the Committee of the Whole to allow for colleagues to ask questions of the Civil Service Commission. That can be done now. When we left off, we were still in the Committee of the Whole. And that's why I said for convenience, we could roll into it. But the motion is to resolve into the Committee of the Whole. If it's right now, because my bill is on, then it'll be right now. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And I'm entertaining that. Are there... Senator Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
So, if we go into the Committee of the Whole, how much time will that take? Well, we had gone into and discussed Bill 417 on Friday. So we all know that it takes time to get into Committee of the Whole. So what I'm trying to assess is we're just starting now at 9:30 or so. And if it's going to take a couple of hours or an hour to go into Committee of the Whole, the body needs to understand that.
Assistant Majority Leader, there is a motion on the floor. Are you registering that as an objection or not?
It's a point of inquiry.
The point of inquiry is, we have risen temporary from the Committee of the Whole to address some concerns. We are now addressing Bill 312. Is there an objection to the Committee of the Whole to bring in Civil Service Commission? That is the motion on the floor right now.
Well, I will object then if I can't find out how long...
There has been an objection.
If it's going to take an hour to delay this.
This is not debatable, Senator Assistant Majority Leader. There has been an objection. All those in favor to resolve into the Committee of the Whole, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. We're on a moment's recess.
10:35, la Plata de Guaján es de vuelta de recesión. Antes de empezar, literalmente me arrepiento de que no haya tomado el tiempo para darle un feliz cumpleaños a uno de nuestros colegas, y muchas bendiciones de Dios a usted en este día muy especial de suerte, senador Regina Biscolet. Feliz cumpleaños. Si podemos decirle feliz cumpleaños a senador Lee. Feliz cumpleaños. El comité del entorno fue ordenado para que el proyecto número 312-35 corriera. permitiré que el autor del proyecto haga una lectura del título cuando tenga la oportunidad. Me gustaría presentar a los invitados del panel de la Comisión de Servicio Civil y agradecerles por venir esta mañana. Y quiero agradecer a mis colegas por la dificultad técnica, pero el Servicio Civil está en marcha ahora mismo. Así que en este momento, Sargento de Huesos, si puede, swear a los miembros, los panelistas.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. ¿Puedo tener a todos los miembros en virtud de que levanten la mano derecha? Bien, bajo las penalties de perjuicio, ¿se afirman que cualquier información que provea, ya sea verbalmente, electrónicamente y en escritura, sea la verdad, toda la verdad y nada más que la verdad? Así que ayúdenme, Dios. ¿Pueden desmute y responder? Lo siento, panel, no podemos escucharlos. ¿Pueden desmute su...? Y luego responder.
Lo hago.
Lo hago.
Lo hago.
Bien, Madam, Madam Presidente, todos están bajo alt.
Señor Sargento de Huesos, colegas, compartiré las reglas de la participación, que son como sigue en este momento. Las preguntas del panel serán respondidas en dos rondas. Cada senador tendrá un límite de cinco minutos estricto. Solo entretendré modificaciones que fueron presentadas. Las modificaciones deben ser presentadas en escritura y a través de correo electrónico al abogado y al consejo legal antes de que se haga una modificación en el piso. Le daré a la patrocinadora la oportunidad de darle sus declaraciones de abertura sobre el proyecto. Después del período de cuestionamiento, la patrocinadora cerrará y saldrán del comité del entorno con la recomendación. Y en este momento, senador Mary Camacho.
Madam Presidente, solo pueden clarificar los dos rondas. Dicen que son cinco minutos para hacer preguntas del panel y luego tendremos otra ronda para las modificaciones, ¿cierto?
Sí.
Bien, gracias.
Sí, senador. Después de que se descarte el panel, hará modificaciones. Así que, senador Mary Camacho Torres, usted es reconocido por cualquier declaración de abertura y puede hacer cualquier pregunta del panel. Empecaré con usted y trabajar alrededor del asunto.
Empecé leyendo el título, Madam Presidente. Empecé leyendo el título.
Sí.
Me muevo a la mesa, proyecto número 312-35, presentado por mí misma, Mary Camacho Torres y la presidenta Tina Munya Barnes, sustituido por el Comité de Averigado de la Justicia, Relyales Humanos y la construcción de Guan. Este es un acto para modificar la sección 4403D-F, artículo 4, capítulo 4, título 4, Guancot anotado, relativo a autorizar la Comisión de Servicio Civil a anular y anular acciones personales que estén en violatione de leyes o regulaciones existentes y para establecer penalties para oficiales públicos que niegan justamente cooperación con investigaciones y para añadir la sección 4406 de artículo 4, capítulo 4, título 4, Guancot anotado, relativo a la eliminación de la aplicación de la norma de 90 días para investigaciones posteriores. Y para añadir la sección 4408 de artículo 4, capítulo 4, título 4, Guancot anotado, relativo al cumplimiento de las órdenes de la Comisión de Servicio Civil y para requerir más la transmisión de las reglas y regulaciones de la comisión a Elessis Letur en Guaján en el tercer archivo de lectura. Y solo hablaré brevemente, Madam Presidente.
Por favor.
No desearía exagerar los puntos que he hecho anteriormente sobre esta medida. El proyecto 312 fue presentado y presentado a solicitud de la Comisión de Servicio Civil. Fue hecho para proteger nuestro sistema de merecedores y empoderar la comisión cuando los jefes de agencia negaron la cooperación en conformación con sus conclusiones. Esto siempre ha sido mi intención. También quiero señalar por la memoria, Madam Presidente, que he pedido que se suban los memorandos del comité de servicio civil en respuesta a las propuestas anteriores para alterar fundamentalmente el proyecto y que la CSC ha oponido todas las modificaciones que alteran los proyectos en su forma actual. En conclusión, Madam Presidente, simplemente pediré a mis colegas que den exactamente lo que solicitan para proteger el sistema de merecedores de Guan. Y supongo que reservaré cualquier pregunta a mis colegas en este momento.
Gracias. Así que no tienen preguntas en este momento para el panel.
Empezaré.
Espera.
En realidad, supongo que empezaré entonces. La pregunta que tengo en los discursos anteriores, mucho del debate se centró en la estatua de limitaciones para una investigación posterio. Y me gustaría pedirle al panel a explicar por qué creen que una estatua de limitaciones es necesaria y cuál es el impacto para los empleados cuando hay una estatua de limitaciones. Cuando hay una estatua de limitaciones, lo siento.
Gracias, senador Torres. Y voy a ir adelante y darle a Mr. Leon Guerrero, el director ejecutivo, y luego usted puede darle a cualquier otro panelista allí con usted. ¿Mister LG?
Sí, muchas gracias, presidente. Y gracias a todos por permitirnos hablar en nombre de la Comisión de Servicio Civil y el apoyo del proyecto que tenemos ante nosotros. En cuanto a la estatua de limitación, por supuesto, ahora mismo, como es, no tenemos una estatua de limitación. Y nos gustaría obtener una estatua de limitación porque necesitamos abordar estos problemas rápidamente en lugar de esperar mucho tiempo. Hacemos casi imposible corregir. Estamos pidiendo una estatua de limitación de seis meses desde el momento en que una acción personal haya sido efectuada. También verificamos con el Office de Special Counsel, nuestro contrapartido en la Comisión de Servicio Civil federal, y tienen un 30 días, tienen hasta 30 días, en realidad, para enviar una demanda contra una acción personal por ser impropia. Así que el timeline es realmente diferente. Quiero decir, no es una gran cosa en lo que nos preocupa, pero al menos proporciona orden para nosotros y podemos abordar el problema si hubo un apropiado contratación inmediatamente. No puedes esperar varios años después de hacer algo así. Me gustaría tener a mi otro miembro del panel, también del Comité de Servicio Civil, que supone ese efecto. Eric.
Sí, señor. Así que sugerimos las limitaciones estatutales para evitar la situación donde alguien ha estado haciendo su trabajo durante dos o tres o cuatro o cinco años y luego descubrimos que había un error en el contrataría original. Pero esta persona obviamente podía hacer el trabajo y recibían buenas reviews cada año, pero de repente vamos a volver cuatro, cinco, seis, diez, quince o veinte años y decimos que vamos a terminarlo. Así que eso es una consecuencia severa. Así que es por eso que sugiramos algún tipo de limitaciones estatutales. El largo de ello es debatable. Nos gustaría algo dentro del rango de dos años, pero es una llamada de juicio para el legislador a decidir qué piensan que es en el mejor interés del territorio.
Rolan, ¿tienes algunas palabras para eso?
Gracias, Dan, y gracias, Madam Presidente, y buenos días, legisladores. También estoy en favor de tener una estatua de limitación. Como dijo Eric, el timeline es debatable, pero seis meses es un buen periodo de inicio, como pueden ver de lo que Dan acaba de declarar, que el Office de Special Counsel trabaja en una estatua de limitación de un mes o un límite de tiempo para efectuar un apel. Así que estoy de acuerdo con eso. También veo los pros y contras que Eric vio y el otro lado de que si una persona no califica, lo correcto es eliminarlo de su trabajo, pero eso es si no están haciendo su trabajo correctamente. Y lo que estamos descubriendo es que después, especialmente después de tres años, ya sabes tu trabajo y estás obteniendo rendimientos satisfactorios. Gracias.
Senador Torres.
Sí, solo quería decir gracias y también la una cosa que fue señalada por el director Leon Guerrero en julio fue que muchos de estos audios, estas demandas para investigaciones posteriores también involucran, o la mayoría de las cuales involucran promociones. Esos son muchos de los reclamos son contra las promociones. Así que creo que también se refieren a la equilibrio que se requiere. Siempre necesitamos considerar cómo nuestra política afecta a las livelihoods de las personas, usted sabe, personas reales que tienen familias que las están apoyando y sin culpa de su propia, esos tipos de consideraciones siempre tienen que ser dadas, incluso cuando una situación no es 100% perfecta. Pero gracias por su posición en la estatua de limitaciones, que también siento especialmente importante, idealmente en el periodo de probationes antes de que una persona esté permanecida en el servicio clasificado. Así que es por eso que elegimos eso. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, senador Torres.
Buenas noches, presidenta y colegas. Tengo dos preguntas para el panel y quien esté allí podrá responderlas, pero estoy solo preocupada por el impacto si no hacemos nada. Entonces, ¿cuál sería el potencial impacto para un empleado sin esta estatua y tal vez sin descubrir demasiado detalle sobre cualquier caso en particular? ¿Tiene alguna ejemplo de este efecto y por qué estamos intentando movernos en esta dirección?
¿Quieres que empiece o solo...?
Sí, Rolan, puede ir adelante.
Bien. Gracias, senador, por esa pregunta. Es una buena pregunta. Sí, si no hacemos nada ahora, aplicar postauditos es casi imposible. Es realmente en el deseo de la gestión si quieren realmente llevar esta investigación posterio todo el camino hasta el final. Si deciden no hacerlo, entonces estamos atrapados. Un ejemplo perfecto de eso es el caso de Kevin Siswiko que pasó de nosotros hasta el Supremo Court y volvió y terminó prevaleciendo. Tenemos otros ejemplos también ahora mismo que tenemos el caso de Samuel DiNoto, donde la gestión se sentía que debía hacer la acción adversa, demolir al tipo, y terminó recibiendo recompensa porque la gestión no tomó ninguna acción en absoluto. Y lo peor que podemos hacer es hacer nada en absoluto.
Eso es muy útil, gracias. Y luego solo una última pregunta, presidenta. Así que esto ha sido cubierto en algunos de los artículos sobre este proyecto y en algunas de las discusiones aquí en el piso. Así que quería poder preguntar al panel una pregunta clarificadora. Así que suponiendo que un empleado malrepresentó sus cualificaciones en una aplicación, ¿es necesario una auditoría posterior para que el gobierno de la agencia sea capaz de emitir una acción adversa? Una acción adversa.
Bien, responderé esa pregunta y feliz cumpleaños, senador.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias por trabajar con su cumpleaños. De todos modos, su pregunta es que siempre que alguien recibe una solicitud de trabajo, hay una forma de advertencia que si falla en completar su solicitud y falsificar la información, que será sujeto a acción adversa o algún tipo de rechazo en su solicitud por la posición si falsificas la información. Y si eso no es escrito al principio, pero más tarde, un agente de una agencia descubre que has falsificado tu solicitud, has puesto algunos grados que no están sustentados y se pueden, en realidad, si ellos sienten que no lo son, tomar una acción adversa contra ti y terminarles de la posición si optan por eso. También hay otras estatuas que vienen en juego que dicen que, usted sabe, que es en realidad un delito si haces eso. Así que hay otras formas, usted sabe, de detectar si un empleado realmente falsifica la información en lugar de solo postauditos. Defiero a mis colegas, si tienen alguna explicación, Eric, y si tiene algo más.
Muchas gracias, Sr. Leon Guerrero, y aprecio esa respuesta. Así que solo para ser absolutamente claro, el timeline de seis meses que estamos discutiendo aquí, contemplado en el proyecto 213-35, solo se aplica a investigaciones posteriores. Así que solo quiero repetir, no necesitas una auditoría posterior para emitir una acción adversa. ¿Es eso correcto?
Es correcto.
Bien, muchas gracias. Señor Massey.
Gracias, senador Lee. Senador Clint Richo, usted es reconocido. Senador Sabina Ferris, ¿algún preguntas?
Buenas tardes a mis colegas y buenas tardes a los miembros del panel. Sí, solo quiero clarificar sobre la auditoría posterior. Así que, usted sabe, para asegurar que el sistema de merecedores esté en marcha, ¿puede describir esta auditoría posterior? Quiero decir, ¿es solo una forma de asegurar que haya calidad? ¿Hay, hay, es, es, primero de todos, ¿es una auditoría posterior solicitada por cualquier jefe de agencia en particular o la Comisión de Servicio Civil solo hace una auditoría posterior solo para ver, solo hacer chequeos regulares dentro del gobierno para ver si las posiciones están siendo llenas basadas en el merecedor?
Bien, senador, deferiré esa pregunta a Rolan.
Buenas tardes, senador. Gracias por esa pregunta. Es una pregunta muy buena. Así que las auditorías posteriores pueden ser发起 por cualquiera, cualquiera en absoluto, que quiera pensar o cree por buena razón que una persona no fue contratada correctamente, una promoción no fue realizada correctamente o por cualquier razón, y podría ser frívolo, pero dependerá de la comisión para decidir si es frívolo o no después de hacer la evaluación y la investigación de ese tema.
Bien, así que es por solicitud. ¿El CSC hace...? Does a CSC do any kind of post-audits just to do a check, an overall check within the government? Is that something that is done?
Thank you, Senator. Yes, in addition to anybody filing a complaint, the Civil Service Commission has authority to review personal actions. And that is in 4403F. So in that one, we review personal actions and we have a timeframe to complete that. And now that's up to the CSC to ask the director to move forward into an assessment and an investigation.
Okay, thank you. So basically, the CSC can initiate it on its own rather than have an agency head request it? Just to clarify, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And how often is these post-audits done by the CSC? That it's not, that's initiated by the CSC?
Okay, those are very rare. We found lately that the agencies have been in compliance in completing their personal actions. We have, on occasion, found minor discrepancies. And when we just simply contact the agency, they will admit right away that it's an administrative error and they'll make the correction right away and send us a correction to that matter.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is there proactive measures in place? So, I mean, we're talking about statutes, but I feel that there's perhaps other alternatives than to implement statutes and having more of this quality control, you know, type of process. Is that something that, I mean, I believe that's within the Civil Service Commission authority. But as far as, you know, updating protocols and, you know, standard operating procedures, you know, I think that may be one way to approach it. And, you know, developing these further than to a statute of limitations. Is that something that is feasible for the Civil Service Commission?
I'll take a shot at this one.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Dan. So the reason why we asked for this legislation is because, and I guess this goes back to the three questions back, is what happened? What happened to the commission that before it used to be null and void is null and void, but now null and void is not really quite null and void? There is due process for classified employees. So this is the Kevin Siswiko matter that went from the Civil Service Commission, which we ruled upon, went to the Superior Court, and then was later raised to the Supreme Court. And so because the courts are now involved in how to handle a post-audit, I guess the question now is, what is the right process? So we believe making these changes to the statute is the best way, the cleanest way, we'll be in compliance with prior decisions in the courts, and we can still do our job very effectively. And if the members want to, panel members want to add on to that, that's up to you guys.
What has happened as of the start of this? We avoid that, is now avoided and has to be terminated, has to go through the adverse action process. And we're having problems with that because we don't have the power to actually notify a classified employee. It has to go back to the department head where the employee is employed. And many times, because of the 60-day rule or the 90-day rule, as it is now, we cannot meet those timelines. And also, there is some type of reluctance by the agency to actually take adverse action against an employee that we, that they are required to do. They either ignore it, or they do something else, which is nothing. In one case, I know of is that they didn't do, they didn't follow the adverse action process. They went ahead and terminated the employee some few months after, and only to find out the employee filed an appeal. And it's right now an active appeal. And if the employee wins on this case, because actually we did not move, we will be faced with back pay and so forth. And that's what we're, that's the reason why we're out here. We're asking help. Come on, legislature, help us out. You gave us a post-audit authority. And we're doing our best to go out there and take care of these complaints. And however, when we find that there is a violation, a serious violation, enough that our Civil Service Commission Board would want to now avoid it, we can't complete the job. And that's why we're asking, can you help us out? It's nothing to do with anything else, then. Please, help us, legislature. Help the Civil Service Commission perform this job. All the other duties and responsibilities that we have, we can do. We can manage in-house. We've faced problems and so forth, but we can perform. But on the post-audit, we're having a difficult time. We can continue doing this, but it's like shooting with all bullets. We cannot complete the process. So please, help us. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for that response. So just another question. So, okay, so if there's a proposal for a statute, what do you think is a fair amount of time?
Well, we are proposing, you're talking about the statute of limitation, I guess, to file a request for post-audit, right? If that's what you're asking, we're asking in our deal for six months. The day the action was taken.
So from the hiring date, you're proposing six months from the hiring date?
Yeah, from the effective date is usually the hiring date, yes. If it's a recruitment process.
And for the reason being, if you can explain?
Right. The Office of Special Counsel, the federal counterpart to our Civil Service Commission, gives a timeframe of, you're allowed up to 30 days to file a complaint.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leon Garrelle, it's hard to hear you if you can speak into the microphone. I appreciate that.
Oh, I apologize for that. My voice is also a little bit scratchy or something. But six months, to us, is usually a good time for anyone that is affected, let's say you competed against for that position, you know. And you find out that someone got hired and you heard something through the grapevine, or you heard it, or you suspected that there's something wrong. Then you can file with us within six months, then we can actually take action. And within 180 days, we should be able to take action because we're required to complete that process within 180 days. We're not trying to, we're finding out that because there's no statute of limitation also, our theory is that people wait down the line for whatever reason. If there's no statute of limitation, you procrastinate and say, oh, I can wait next month, so forth and everything. Meanwhile, there is a problem there because we need to investigate immediately to fix it. Why are we going to wait so many months or a year, two years, 20 years? Some of the complaints are that long. And, you know, I mean, to me, it's only reasonable that we address these complaints while waiting. Ralat, you have anything to add to that?
The only, thank you, Dan. The only thing I would add to that is, we already have court matters that were decided in the Rick Bloss versus Customs matter. And I believe that was a Supreme Court ruling. And then we also have the Jesus K. Polino matter versus Customs, which is a Superior Court ruling. So the issue there was, and I guess your question is, why six months? So the issue in those court proceedings was partially due to, when does an employee become classified? And the court said, well, if management, if you haven't done anything in six months, well, in our eyes, they're automatically a classified employee. And that's how six months came about. So if you're wondering why six months and why that is more reasonable than potentially anything else, that's the only reason, because the court's how they already wrote on that. And we're just trying to be consistent now with prior court rulings, what were the problems we're encountering right now as we enforce the statute, and how to fix these things. That's about it.
Appreciate the response. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Legislative Secretary Shelton?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Hafedeh, good morning to the panel. I appreciate the discussion here this morning, and I'll continue to listen and save my questions for the next round. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Pito Terlahi Consigli?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just have a couple of issues regarding this, some of the bills. Do the Civil Service Commission ever come up with an incident where a public official or the person in charge of hiring and all that in the agencies? Is there any incidence of that official refusing to abide with the Civil Service Commission? And if that person refuses to abide with the Civil Service Commission, what would be the consequences of that official? Does the Civil Service Commission have that authority to impound some kind of violation or something? Would it be just a civil type of action? Or would it be under the violation of any particular crime within, you know, that incident?
I'll defer this to Eric. Eric, can you please answer?
I'm not sure I understood the question, but...
Well, let me rephrase. Is there any incident where a public official from an agency refuses to abide with your instruction in as far as the investigation that's going on? Is there any official that refuses to be part, to be questioned by the Civil Service Commission?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Your answer is yes. So what authority does the Civil Service Commission have in reference to whatever consequences that will come to that person?
Yeah, the only way we can enforce, we can enforce a ruling would be for us to go into court and sue the agency, which takes a lot of time and expense. We don't have any other way to enforce.
Under what authority do you have to enforce, you know, the violation of that particular person? Would that be under a criminal type of act? Or would that be just a discretionary ruling from the Civil Service Commission?
So it would be civil, not criminal. It would be an action taken by the commission to ask for a court order that the agency do what we think they should be doing.
Okay.
I would just add, Senator, that that's a very good question. Is that we're also asking in our deal that we can actually, if the agency director or the deputy director refuses to cooperate with us, that we can actually go to court and, you know, fine him. I believe up to, if he refuses to cooperate, I think up to a fine of $1,000, you know. And that's what we're thinking there. We hope not to use it, but we use it. It's patterned the same as the FOIA law, where if an agency head refuses to provide documents that are requested of him, that he will be fined $1,000. So we feel that maybe that can be like an incentive. Myself, a cabinet member, every time I get a FOIA, I comply immediately because I know that $1,000 is going to come out of my pocket if I don't. And so maybe that is one way we can do. But as far as civil penalties, civil service does not have any, anything to do. There's no other way to enforce or force the agency head or deputy to comply. Ralat, you want to add something to that?
Thank you very much.
Just to reiterate.
Go ahead, Ralat.
Did you want me? Okay. Just to reiterate, right now, currently, we have nothing in our statute to allow us to enforce anything against management. And I think that was your question, Senator Pito.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Pito. Senator Munya?
Thank you very much, and thank you again to the panel from the commission for being here to, at least for me, help me understand what the process is that the commission does for everyone. Just a couple, there's page five on item number six. It talks about the post-audit investigation. And for me, I'd just like to, if maybe anyone in the panel can help me understand exactly what the audit is for and who's the one who conducts the audit? And then also, who conducts the post-audit investigation? And what is done with the findings of that investigation? If they can just help me understand that portion?
Okay, Senator, I'll try my best. Simply, a post-audit is usually triggered through a complaint by an employee or some person of interest. And once we get that complaint, we try to find out if there's, how you say, do we have jurisdiction? And we ask our Civil Service Commission Board, and ask them if it's okay to proceed. Once that is done, personal management analysts will be assigned to do the investigation. And what they do is they go up to the agency and they request for documents, and they make interviews, and they gather all the information that is pertinent. They interview affected employees and so forth. And then they make their analysis and recommendations and identify if there are violations of rules and laws. And then we present it to the Civil Service Commission Board. The Civil Service Commission Board will make a decision. And then the parties, both the complainant and the employee, actually, the agency would have 10 days to respond to it. Then the Civil Service Commission would make their final determination. After that, if it's a serious violation and the commission ruled that we need to now avoid the personal action because of its seriousness, then that's the process that we go to. We inform the agency that is responsible for the action, that they must proceed and now avoid and take adverse action against the employee. That's where, like I said, we're having problems with. And that's the part that we're asking, can you please fix that up? I hope that clarifies and answered your first question. As far as your second question, Ralat, can you answer that question?
You did a very good, thank you, Dan. You did a very good job explaining the process. But I'm so sorry, I forgot the second question. What was the second question?
So basically, it was just the process, first of all, the audit, the beginning stage is the audit. What is it for and who does that audit? And then, of course, the second part is the post-audit investigation. So I think he answered the post-audit, but in actuality, the...
So your first question, then? You understand the first question, Ralat?
Oh, so, okay, I'm sorry. So an audit and a post-audit, I think you're seeing a difference between the two? Right now, I don't see the difference between the two, unless you think there's a difference. Is that your question?
Yeah, I'm just, because it says post-audit investigation. Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm, because it says post-audit investigation. And so I'm just wondering, is there a first audit and then a post-audit investigation? I'm just, I just need to be more clear.
No, I don't think there's any difference in the, in the, in that language. Basically, it's an audit. And so who generates, uh, an audit? And a complainant will generate an audit. And then, of course, they'll go to the staff, they'll go to the executive director to assign it to a case manager, which will then take that matter to the commission and say during an assessment hearing, we have enough evidence here to go forward into an investigation. And if the commission then void, uh, votes to go forward, then we go into an investigation. And then after completing the investigation... Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say to, the Senator has a good point. The, the name "post-audit" is a little misleading. Post-audit is the term for the process of reviewing personnel action, period.
Okay, okay, great.
I don't, but the origin of that term is, but essentially, we consider the term "post-aud" just as a, uh, way of describing that we're going to investigate and decide whether a particular personnel action was done properly or not.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, I'll reserve my time again for the next round.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Munya. Minority Leader, you recognize?
Madam Chair, before we get started, is the five minutes my time, but not including their response?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here. I've called a couple of times, just for the record. Civil Service and left messages, um, a couple of weeks ago, actually, and still haven't heard back. So, a lot of these questions I have, I don't have enough time, because we're only giving five minutes, at least in this round. But anyways, Dan, uh, Mr. Director, you mentioned earlier something about the Siswiko case. And I think the problem you, uh, the problem you referred to earlier, this is because the Supreme Court recently found that the Siswiko case, that the law protected employee from being demoted or terminated without following the adverse action, uh, procedure. And I think that's really the real problem. But, uh, going back to the, um, the, the Civil Service Commission, do you have a resolution from your board regarding this bill? Was a resolution put together?
Um, we don't have a formal resolution, but we have...
So it was just you and the staff that came up with these things? Or were you approached by somebody?
No, we, let me explain. As far as the, we're talking about the bill, right, the proposed bill?
Yes, yes, and all the changes.
We have informed and we have advised and I've been told to proceed with this bill. They understand the problem that we have or we face upon, and they always encourage us. And we always give them updated with our concern. We have the blessing of our board.
But there is, but there is no resolution from the board, um, supporting this, this measure? And usually, you know, sometimes...
We don't have a, we don't have a formal resolution from them supporting.
Okay, so...
But on record, I want to say that they are supporting our bill.
Well, I heard, I heard, Dan, if you can tell me, uh, Mr. Director, that you, when the meeting regarding this legislation, there was concerns about the statute of limitations and that, uh, some of the members were asking for, uh, one year and some were asking for two years. Is that correct?
When we are trying to put together a statute of limitations, there are discussions. I feel maybe that two years is good, uh, but everyone, uh, or one year or, or so forth. I, I think two years was, uh, uh, the most. But we all felt the same way, we need to put a statute of limitations. And our bill actually asked for six months. And our board blesses that also.
And then, um, okay.
The discussion for, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, so here, here's another question, Dan. What if the employee is honest about not being qualified? And either the managers know, uh, know, know better or just, you know, look the other way? Is that considered fraud in, in, well, maybe your attorney might be able to, to, uh, answer that question?
We don't have any authority in that, in that area, but, uh, maybe, uh, Eric Miller, attorney?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Leongro. I could barely hear you. Uh, it's muffling, yeah, appreciate it.
Uh, sorry. Uh, let me try and speak a little louder. Uh, as far as, uh, we don't have any authority as far as going after an employee that is, uh, committing any violations or, or, or up to, um, no good. It's actually, if it's within the agency, it's actually the appointing authority. If they find that, uh, employee handling personal matters or, or not following the rules and regulations, they, they, they have the power to dis, to apply some disciplinary action or corrective actions there, but not the Civil Service Commission. I hope that answers your...
Yeah, I, my question was about fraud, uh, Dan?
Oh, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll defer to my legal...
Attorney, right. And if, if you need me, Mr. Miller, if you need me to repeat the question, just let me know. But I think you heard my question.
Go ahead and repeat the question.
Okay, sure.
Please.
Sure. And, uh, what if an employee is honest, uh, about being qualified to enter into a, a job? And either the manager who knew better or just simply just turned a blind eye? Would that employee be considered, uh, creating fraud?
No.
Okay, so this is not fraud, so, okay.
The, all the, the employee has not knowingly done anything wrong.
Okay, so then that means...
They were selected, uh, and we see this, that's how a lot of these cases unfold. Somebody shows up for a job interview and they end up being given a job for which they're not qualified. Maybe they didn't have enough college or they didn't have enough years of experience. Or maybe the kind of experience isn't relevant to give them the necessary experience to compete for the job.
And knowing that the manager or the, the person hiring or the director hiring that individual, just turned a blind eye, knowing that he doesn't meet the qualifications. So it would not be considered fraud on the employee's side. Hence, if that's so, the fraud, um, then fraud would be struck and out and an unqualified employee would have a job for the next 30 to 40 years. And, uh, based on that, pay scales are developed using these requirements needed for these positions. So, thank you for answering that with regards to the fraud. The other question I had is, um, how many people did, did they, uh, have you terminated last year because of an audit led to an adverse finding? How many people were terminated, Mr. Director?
I would defer to Roland. I don't think any, right?
None, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Does the commission review the staff's recommendations? Or can the director or the staff simply fire somebody?
Are, are we talking about Civil Service Commission?
Yes, yes. Does the Civil Service Commission, I'm sorry. Does the Civil Service Commission review the staff's recommendations? Or can the director and staff simply fire someone?
No, uh, we don't have any power to do that. Our staff actually does the, uh, uh, the investigation themselves. And Roland is in, Roland is in charge of those people. And they do make their recommendations. And I actually review them, but I do not make any changes. Recommendations are made by the staff. And all I do is make sure that they are, uh, you know, they're proper and so forth. But sometimes they ask me to make a recommendation. I said, "That's not my job. That's executive director, that is your job." And that, and that's true. And that goes to the Civil Service Commission Board. They make the decisions from these patterns, not the staff. I don't, they can either fault the recommendation, uh, or change a recommendation, depending on what they feel is, uh, all the process goes involved. I hope that answers the question you have.
Yes, thank you so much, Dan. Thank you. Uh, Roland, you mentioned earlier, you were talking, uh, with one of the senators regarding the $1,000 fine in, in this legislation. But in the current law, is, there's a section of the law that, that fines, uh, 10% reduction in director and deputy director's salary if they fail to comply with the process. Can you, is that true? Is that currently in, in the law right now?
Thank you, Senator, I agree. Uh, you are correct. That, that, that is currently in the statute for the 10% of, uh, uh, director or deputy director's salary. However, uh, since the days of Doris Forrest Brooks, we found out that that is practically an enforceable, unenforceable statute. Meaning, the question is, who's going to enforce that? And what we found out through experience is, the best way to enforce, uh, penalties is through the court, because the agency has no authority to do it on its own. So, what we did on this proposed legislation, as you can see, we mirrored the FOIA request, uh, violation to assess penalties against a director or any non-cooperative participant.
Okay. Thank you, Roland, for that. Um, I, I know my time is, my time's up. Okay, okay, oh, it's okay, then. I'll save the remaining, but I do have one minute or one minute?
You have one more minute, Senator.
Okay, great. So, last question, I mean, before I turn it over is, what is a check, uh, on managers for hiring? If the process is confidential, except for a few in the department? Actually, this is going to be a long one because it's a three-part question. So I'll just reserve it for the next round, because I'll be running out of time. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Senator. Senator Jim Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can, you have my time to the last speaker, if she so wish. I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator Will Castro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank the panelists for, um, their responses. It's a really enlightening experience to hear both counsel and the director and, and the professional staff share their thoughts. Uh, but I think it's important for me to state that I, I support the overarching intent of this bill. I, I certainly could see, I could see where we're going with this in terms of the, to use the term loosely, the unfairness of someone who's been in the position over an extended period of time. You know, to ensure that someone has gone through the process and, and performed satisfactory for, let's say, 10 years. Uh, and I do think it's unfair, as I discussed with my colleague, the prime sponsor, that for that person to be removed in a post-audit investigation, or at least for those, um, actions to be recommended for removal, I, I think, I think warrants another look. And, and I can also agree, you know, that if they have satisfactory ratings, if maybe there weren't any complaints, that this person just, you know, did a good job. And I'm not even talking about being stellar. I'm talking about just having performed over an extended period of time. In, in my mind, and I'm not an attorney, I'm certainly not an HR expert, but in my mind, you've accrued the necessary time and grade to justify your existence in the position and to continue forth. But, but my, my reservations, Madam Chair, you know, my reservations really rest with the other side of that equation. I think my colleague may have alluded to that. You know, I don't even want to go deep into the ethics of hiring, you know, whether there was willful intent, whether somebody, you know, whether they slipped through the process. Whether it's widespread or whether there's that 1% chance or the .00% chance of it happening. You know, for me, and I'm hoping I can reach a compromise with the prime sponsor and, and the other sponsor, that we can compromise on, on, on a window, a window. Because whether it's rampant or whether it's so minute of a possibility of it even happening, in my opinion, as a member of this body, we have to protect the option for redress. That's my only concern and want to state that out front. You know, I hear, I hear this, this opportunity for post-audit to be closed within six months and I hear it being used almost interchangeably with, with adverse action. And what little time I spend in government, I, I think those are, those are, those may not be the same thing because adverse action usually is done for, uh, you know, in the context of progressive discipline, if someone's violating the policies or the laws of Guam or both. But, but what I'm seeing in this particular bill is the closure of a window to redress something that was allowed to persist through time. And maybe that person never did anything wrong. And before I, before I get to the five-minute mark, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and bring that home for, for at least my colleagues to see where I'm going with this. I don't expect the panel to, to have the answers to my questions, but I'll ask it anyway. And if you do, I'll be extremely impressed and I thank you in advance for it. To anybody on the panel, how many GovGuam applications are filled out each year? Actually, you know, go through the process and, and selections made? And, and the follow-up question, if you want to answer, that's fine. If you don't, it's okay, I'll go on. How many of those are found to be incomplete or erroneous? Again, not, not questioning motive, just, just it kind of slipping through. And, and my point, Madam Chair, is this, I, in my opinion, based on my limited experience in the executive branch, we simply don't have enough HR professionals out there or, or maybe, maybe we don't have enough people who want to examine all of the applications that may or may not have come through. And then it becomes very subjective. I already know, I've debated this with the prime sponsor staff, who did a tremendous job, counterpointing a lot of my concerns and was good. You see, you can't take away the fact that if there are procedural errors in the competitive process, that that is opportunity for redress. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about them getting through the initial hoops. It was properly announced, they properly competed, et cetera. But I'm talking about the soft areas where one may take an appointment. Can I get a, just a heads up on the amount of time left? Seconds? 30 seconds, okay. You know what, Madam Chair? I, I guess I stated my point upfront. And what I'm gonna do at the end is basically, uh, wait for the second round to close and then I'll proffer two more questions on the second round. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Castro. Senator Marsh Taitino?
Asana Maasi. So, I've appreciated the listening to the different points. And, uh, there's a lot to think through here. So, I don't have any questions at this time, though.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Taitino. I'll recognize Senator Jim Moylan quickly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For my time, I risk to pass that to, uh, the good Senator, uh, from Joknias, Senator Therese. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. Senator Terahy?
Me, Madam Speaker? Wait, are you calling on me? Okay. Thank you. So, of course, as I said, uh, the last time we discussed this bill, there are certain parts of this bill that are, are excellent and I can see why the, the Civil Service Commission, you know, needs, um, our assistance, especially in, in getting agencies to cooperate. So, number one, the, in the statute amendments where we're demanding that they cooperate or they are subject to $1,000 fines, you know, I support those provisions. I, I think those are good. And, um, they've, uh, you know, patterned these after other provisions that we've seen enforced. So, so that's great. And that they are going directly to a court for redress if agencies are not cooperating. And so that's what we want our Civil Service Commission to be able to do. So I appreciate those changes to this bill, I mean, by this bill. And then, um, of course, we've seen in the recent court case that the imposition of the 90-day rule on, on these types of post-audits by the commission would, would render the commission in, unable to effect, effectively, um, render anything null and void. Because we would never, management, government would never meet the 90-day rule. So we need to negate that 90-day rule somehow. And so, the bill makes a provision, you know, to simply say that the 90-day rule shall not apply and, um, to actions taken pursuant to 4403D. So we understand that the Civil Service Commission is, has, you know, um, several authorities. One is 4403B, and that is the adverse action when, when, and management takes an action against an employee, they call that an adverse action, and those are 4403B actions, and an employee gets to appeal to the civil service. There are also the 4403D actions, which is what this bill's all about. It's that ability by the commissioners to investigate and set aside and declare null and void any personnel, personnel action of an employee in the classified service if the... and void any personnel action of an employee in the classified service if the commission finds that the personnel action was taken in violation of personnel laws or rules. And it says that "this section shall not be deemed to permit appeals by employees from adverse actions not covered in subsection B above." But the court had recently said, if you are going to declare something null and void, which the commission did, you have to follow the 90-day rule, or, yeah. And so the commission's decision was not enforced in that occasion. And we want to reverse that. We want the commission's decisions in these post-audits to be honored. I think that we should focus on that in this, in the work that we are doing. And those are the urgent needs, because otherwise, we are losing, we will lose every decision by this commission in this regard until we fix that. But whether the statute of limits that we set, I feel like that's not really as urgent as those other matters. The statute of limits that's being proposed in this bill, of course, I have a contention with that. It's setting a six-month statute of limits. It's very, it's a very short time to be able to come to this commission and say there was an error in the hiring, or the promotion, or the termination, or, I mean, the demotion. I think they also have jurisdiction over those types of actions. And so, you know, I reviewed some of the material regarding this six-month timeframe. And of course, in the testimony in the digest of the committee report, we see that, you know, one of the representatives from the commission said that it was, they had discussed that some of them wanted longer, some of them wanted no limit, some wanted over two years, some wanted three years, some, you know, but they also said that if we wanted to protect the merit system, and that was our sole intention, that we should put no timeframe, meaning anyone, at any time, if they discover that there was an error in the hiring, or the promotion, that they should be able to make a complaint and correct that, whether it's another employee, whether it's a new management, and that's what I'm a little bit concerned about. So if we look back to the recent case at the port, they talk about, I'm reading from the decision now, and it talks about, "On May 10, 2012, the port authority requested the civil service to conduct a post-audit investigation of the recruitment actions regarding certain employees." If I remember correctly from the news, this was because the stories at the time were accusing the port of nepotism and other things, and so they asked for an audit. They went to civil service, they had to do random, I think, it was supposed to be random of employees, and the port chose the employees to be audited, and I also recall at that time that they, I think they made a finding that four out of six were not qualified, meaning they didn't meet every criteria, criteria that was announced when they announced the position. And I think that's very important. It's not that anybody had any bad intention, but they were not qualified according to the announcements, right? And this is, this is a very difficult position to be in. For example, if, you know, the Senator, my colleague to the right of me, and I apply for the same job, they require a degree in anthropology, and they give me the job, you know, how is anybody going to know that I don't have a degree in anthropology? Not everybody knows that, right? I might, it might not even ever have come up in any conversation, but it's very difficult. We're making, you know, personnel applications, those are not necessarily open to the public. And I bring this up because we're talking about unfairness. But it's unfair to the person who didn't get the job, who actually did have the degree. And that's really what I want to point out, like my colleague pointed out earlier. It's like we're talking, we can talk about the unfairness to the one employee who might have been employed, you know, for a certain number of years, and then we find out they did it all wrong. Or there might be four out of six that we find out years later were not done correctly. And we might find out later, you know, that there were 25 for every one hiring who were qualified and should have got that job, or should have got that promotion, and that's the issue. It's not just the one employee who might have to lose his job, or get, you know, transferred to another job that he is qualified, or some other remedy. But this should not be the remedy for that employee, that we just look the other way. Because once we start looking the other way, these things may increase, because all you need to do is get away with it for six months. And it's, I'm not saying I don't feel bad for these employees, but I do believe that they might have another remedy. They may be able to qualify for another job. But for those people who, you know, did something extra to qualify for certain jobs, that should be honored. That's what our merit system's all about. Who gets the job is based on qualifications, and we have to stick to that. We have to, because we start making exceptions to that, and, you know, we already have some exceptions by law, some preferences, but the more we divert from qualifications, the more we divert from the merit system, which was one of the, you know, requisites in our organic act. And, you know, we talk about corruption, and a lot of times in the past, corruption, you know, was described as hiring, you know, oh, we're hiring, they talk about nepotism, they talk about, we're hiring family, we're hiring, you know, whatever, unqualified people. That's, that was, that's the complaint of corruption. And corruption very rarely exposes itself to us. They rarely show us, oh, that person was not qualified. It's not easily shown, not easily found. I can't go and determine that for any employee at the port right now, even as a senator. I don't have access to their personnel files. I can't look at that. Only the civil service can look at that. Very few people are privileged to really get the documents or the evidence that are going to show us when corruption exists, or be able to prove corruption. I need to stop? Okay.
Next round. Thank you, Senator Therese. We'll start back with the author again. She was yielded her five minutes, and it was utilized? Yes, it was yielded. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Yes, the, if the panel may comment, there's a lot of discussion about hiring of unqualified people, of management possibly being corrupt in the selection of unqualified people. But I just want to ask the panel, though, there is in these agencies and HR department, a human resources department who has the ethical obligation to be upstanding and to follow the personnel rules and regs that they themselves enforce, first of all. Secondly, you know, the idea here is, of this bill, is to correct where there are gaps right now that make it impossible for the Civil Service Commission to enforce their findings in post-audit investigations. And so I just wanted to ask the panel, can you please comment where there are situations where there is alleged corruption by management, alleged corruption by the HR departments? You know, those are, aren't those, in fact, causes of action to take action against those people who are committing corruption and fraud? Is that, isn't that correct? Because I just want to circle back to the fact that we have rules and regulations in place, and wherever there is a violation of that, that in and of itself has to be dealt with, whether it's somebody blowing the whistle on them, as we all should. If we're aware of corruption, we have an obligation to blow the whistle on people, and not just, you know, make accusations without really calling them out on it. So can you just comment on that, please, panel, the idea that laying low, getting away, all of this? If somebody violates personnel rules and regulations, isn't that a reason for them to be taken up, even if they're unclassified? You know, everyone is accountable to rules and regulations. Isn't that correct?
Well, I would agree with it. Also, if there is corruption in the human resource department, those bad actors could be disciplined, or improperly, or knowingly improperly processing the hiring process.
Just, thank you. I just wanted us to get back to, to the, you know, to what the meat of the bill is, and it's to address those gaps that the Civil Service Commission found to be problematic. And I think one of the first ones was that in the court cases where these employees were prevailed, in the Siswiko matter, it all had to do with them being classified employees, and they were bound by the adverse action rule, which included the role that management was required to take action when they knew or should have known that there was a violation. And so that really was the heart and soul of not only the Siswiko, but the other matters in customs that Mr. Fehren alluded to. So that problem right there is one of the things that we're addressing here, among others. But I just want to get everybody's back to the fact that corruption has its way of being dealt with, and it's no different for the employee as it is for the HR department or the management in charge of the hiring. Sisna Massey.
You want us to comment?
You may, please.
Well, I just, you know, I worked also in my career at Department of Administration and Human Resources Section, and I was in charge of recruitment. And what we do is the evaluation of applicants to determine if they meet the minimum requirements of the position, and also to assign points. It's part of our process. And I like to say that it's, you know, as far as I know, working in there, we take our jobs very seriously about evaluating application. We make sure that the person has the requirements, like all government employees have to have a minimum of high school degree. We make sure that they have their bachelor's degree if it's required, or equivalency. We go through their information, and we evaluate each experience and give them credit accordingly. And it's all well documented and everything in file, and of course, it has to be kept in confidential. And I trust a lot of those people that I work with, I have confidence with them. There are matters that sometimes, that occurs, but we verify those as far as their, as their minimum, I mean, I'm talking about their degrees and so forth. We verify, we have ways of going by and verifying if they did receive their degrees, whether it's on island, off island, and so forth. I think they do a pretty good job. There may be some instances where it happened, but as far as I know, I am very proud of the work that we did at Department of Administration and Recruitment Branch. I just want to put that on record, you know. And the documents are all there and everything, you know, ready for anyone to review. But, yeah, it's just one of those things, you just can't go in there, just like medical records, you can't just go in there and just review them, you know. There's need of confidentiality, and also there's need to trust sometimes some of the people that are doing their job and doing their best they can. That's all I have to say, just for the record.
Senator Torres, you have a minute and 50 seconds left.
Anyone else wants to add?
Do you mind then if I add it to that?
Please, please, you can, yes, Mr. Fehren, please proceed.
Okay, so, to address your question, Senator Torres, you are absolutely correct. Every employee in the government of Guam is accountable for their actions, for whatever job they do. If they do their job incorrectly, it is subject to disciplinary, and even up to and leading to adverse action proceedings. There is nobody here that is going to run free and do corruptible stuff in the government of Guam. You're right. It might not get noticed right away, but like the old saying says, justice is slow, but sure. So when we catch up to those people, the right thing will happen all the time. So, and they know that. Employees know to do the right thing. They know not to do the right, to do the wrong thing, they're subject to termination. They already know that. It's obvious about how many people don't even appeal their adverse action, because they know what they did was wrong. So corruption does not go unchecked. It does get checked out. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to, one last point, too, is that we all know that without a statute of limitations, there's no parameters. But when you put in a statute of limitations, put in a rule, you then alter behavior. In other words, when people know there's a deadline, people will work towards that deadline. It's like with anything else, if you don't have a deadline, there's no, there's no sense of urgency, and there's no sense of duty in some regards to act quickly. But with, you know, with a statute of limitations in place, and of course, it can be debated if someone has a desire to change that, you know, that can be proposed. But the idea that you have to, you have to have parameters for everything, I mean, most, most appeals have a timeline for you to take action, and this should be no different, especially when it involves a job and the livelihood of people who are most likely supporting families. I mean, we can't take that human aspect out of it. There's a problem, you deal with it, but you deal with it in the best way so that, you know, the adverse implications to the agency who has a position to fill, or to the family member that has obligations and a livelihood, it's balanced. And that's what a statute of limitation does. It makes us all responsible, and it gives us this timeframe to be accountable and to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Torres, Senator Lee, any additional question?
Sisna Massey, Madam Speaker. I don't have any additional questions for the panel, but I did just want to highlight something that the retiring speaker was mentioning in her remarks just now, and I think it's really important for us as policymakers to try to create this situation, create this policy, that if you are hired through, you know, you went along the process, you were hired, you did well, you performed well, you provided this service for the people of Guam, for the government of Guam for decades, and then subsequently, somebody finds out there was an error, and again, through no fault of the employee, but, you know, it wasn't fraud, because we've already covered that, that you should lose your job. And that just, it's really difficult for me, Madam Chair, to wrap my mind around that, just as an issue of fairness. And so I'm glad that we have this bill and that we're having this conversation, and that the panel members have joined us and have helped to clarify some of those points. Sisna Massey.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Rujal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a question for the commission. On page four, line 26 of the bill, it talks about where the commission declares any personnel action null and void, "The commission shall have the authority to demote or dismiss the employees and shall serve the employees and the agency head with notice of proposed adverse action, and where appropriate, notice of final adverse action." Is the intent here to allow the commission to be able to demote or terminate people, or is the intent to just have the agency head, I guess, be given notice of a proposed adverse action, and then the agency head implement it? That's what I'm trying to determine with this section here.
So... The purpose for that language is to take away from the agency director the authority to terminate the employee and put it with the commission. That way, it's actually, we don't be telling the agency what to do, we just do it.
All right.
All right. You want it?
Did you want me to answer?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes, good question, Senator Rujal. So we already have authority like that in the political activity laws. We also have... that in the political activity laws. We also have it in the Public Employee Protection Act, where the Civil Service Commission can actually demote or, uh, or dismiss an employee. Now, we want to also incorporate it into the null and void authority, so that it'll be done a lot quicker, a lot faster. We're already giving, in our current process right now, with the current statute, we're already giving 10 days response. We might as well just complete the whole process and do everything, and then allow the employee to appeal it to the courts, or whoever feels they were hurt on this can go to the courts and appeal their, the matter there. Does that answer your question, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Sabino?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I yield my time to Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi.
A unit can only be done once.
Yeah.
So you yield your time. Thank you.
To Senator Therese.
To Senator Therese, thank you. Legislative Secretary? Senator Pito?
I just wanted to get back to, uh, the previous speaker regarding the 90-day rule, because I think that the 90 days is just a little bit too short. By the time there's, there need to be an investigation, the 90-day rule would, would probably lapse already. So of course, uh, that particular employee that violated, you know, whatever needs to be accurately put down on the application. So, uh, I hope that there, there will be an amendment to this particular bill in as far as extending the 90-day rule to at least a year, two years. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Turlahi. Senator Munya?
I have no questions for the panel. Thank you.
Thank you. Our minority leader to the panel.
Sisus Massey. And again, thank you, gentlemen, for being here today and answering some of our questions. It was kind of hard to hear some of the things you said, but I'm hoping that you can give me, I'm going to try and call you later on and speak with you on some other things with regards to this bill, because I could barely hear you, and it's probably better listening audience could probably hear. But anyways, you know, the, the statute of limitations right now is, is a real big concern, especially, you know, it was mentioning earlier from the Civil Service Commission that corruption and, and nothing goes unchecked. But in a perfect government of Guam world, if that was the case, but the reality is, it's not. Most cases, sometimes when people are doing, having probation for six months, they, they definitely go unnoticed, you know, because they're under probation. Um, and let me give you an example, too. The, the situation with the Senator Matt Rector, when he became a senator, and in his application to run, did actually, actually did not indicate that he had a, um, a moral turpitude, a misdemeanor of moral turpitude, that he did not have the qualifications to run. And that wasn't discovered till like a year and a half later. So things like that pop out all the time, especially in, you know, HR follows the law, but realistically, especially when we're talking about political hires, um, you know, these, these become unnoticed, sometimes for like three years, or sometimes four years, or until the next administration comes in and recognizes that these individuals were not placed in this job through merit. And it was mentioned earlier, and I can't stress enough, you know, here you're protecting one individual while 20 other people who met those qualifications were not hired, did not get the job when they had all those qualifications. It's just heart wrenching. The, I think it was Louis Baza who mentioned, um, a former commissioner at the Civil Service Board who passed away, mentioned it to a director, straight out, that you're worried about the one individual, I'm worried about the 20 who applied for that job and didn't get it. So, you know, it, it behooves me to, to think that we can allow this type of system when, by, not only by law, but by the organic act of Guam, to hold up the merit system be in place. Not having the board put out a resolution, you know, to, to support this bill is another thing. It makes me think, well, who, who put you guys up to putting this bill together? Was it an effort by somebody, or, or is it something that you, you guys wanted to put together? Or a lot of questions here. And, but I do, do appreciate, you know, all you're doing at the Civil Service Commission to do your very best. And that's concerning, too, because this bill has you doing other things that may require additional staff. And that being said, Mr. Director, you know, with some of the requirements in this legislation, um, will you be needing additional staff to fulfill it?
Do you want me to respond to that?
Mr. Director, will you be needing additional staff to fulfill this bill's additional duties?
Well, we, can I answer that question? Well, we had a chief DPMR, we viewed the, the proposed bill, and there, and they made an assessment, and it came to conclusion that we do not need additional staff to perform the work we're already performing. We just tried to complete the work we're doing. We're not, it's not going to add anymore. We would like the luxury of getting more staff. I don't even have a secretary, and I'm doing all, all my own filing and everything. Sure, government is, you know, I mean, there, there, we don't have that much staff. But my analysts are doing a pretty good job, you know, keeping up with the workload, taking care of all the complaints, post audit complaints pretty much, and handle all the other duties and responsibilities. But no, we're, we're okay. And I, I don't know where that came from about that we're lacking staff, and there'll be additional responsibility, but we're taking care of our workload right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Director, for your time. And, and also, Mr. Miller, I really appreciate being here. And of course, Rollin, who's been there since 19 forgotten, thank you so much for being, for answering my questions as well, too. And I will be trying to reach out to your office later on in the, later on today, and I hope you, I did leave a couple messages to call me back. So if you can give me a call, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Senator, Senator Castro?
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, Madam Speaker. Again, this is a healthy discussion. My colleagues address a number of scenarios, and I, I just want to surmise that, at the end of the day, Speaker, you know, this is the people's government, and wrong, wrong is wrong. And again, I think that to limit, to limit a post-audit investigation to a window of six months, so that someone can have long-term classified employment protection, I, I just don't think it's sufficient. I, I think, again, I want to state, Madam Speaker, so that there could be a compromise on this perhaps, that we should allow for enough time, sufficient time, sufficient window of opportunity to address this, whether it's a shortcoming, right? So that through time, you can transcend the administration or this climate of practice that could be happening in a division, even devoid of management's knowledge perhaps. But it's my position that no one has the right to classify lifelong employment because we willingly or inadvertently overlooked it for six months. Again, I want to state for the fourth time that I support the intent to have a cap in terms of the time that you have to redress an issue. And I joked, and perhaps this is misplaced, but I made a joke earlier, my colleague, that I can't even get my tax returns in six months. And to allow for a post-audit opportunity for all the applicants in the Guan Guam spectrum, that might be a bit of a burden. Madam Speaker, my, my last point before I close, again, is given the realities of this economy and the shrinkage of general government revenues, we will see, or we may have already seen, or are, are made privy to the only option that's in front of us, which is to pare back the size of this government, Madam Speaker. And when you do that, we have to ensure as lawmakers that we deliver the best possible service or product to the people of Guam, and you do that by hiring the most qualified people, not the most well-liked or well-connected for which this climate of environment is permitted. I'm not talking about this administration. I'm talking about any administration, past or, or future, even, even the past. My staff will tell you that I support employees through professional development as a former director, as a former technical staffer, a program coordinator, a, a chief planner, a director, unclassified employee, Madam Speaker. But, but what I found very startling, and I, I, again, I mean no disrespect, I just want to restate this for the record, what I believe I heard, is that I would like you to appoint me and to keep me, because my, my family depends on that income. This is the government of Guam we're talking about here, and everybody has one right. This is perhaps the only right. It's the right to apply and compete, to go through the process to determine eligibility, and then ultimately your qualification, your most competitive position for whatever it is you're attempting to, to be placed in. Again, Madam Speaker, fifth and last time I'll say it, that if the statute, if you would amend it to include a tenure window, because time allows for a mitigation strategy for the agency or the appointing authority to make it right. But to simply throw it out over six months and, and you're good to go, that just doesn't, it doesn't even feel right. I don't even have to be an HR professional or, or a person of the law to know this. It just, something feels wrong about it, and I just can't vote for that. Madam Speaker, I believe that we should preserve the CSC's ability to conduct a post-audit investigation at any time, notwithstanding the other argument, which I think has merit, whether, you know, as to what, what they can do about it, what the inherent powers of CSC are, that, that they can do about the findings. But to even allow for an investigation, Madam Speaker, I think that's something we should preserve for the CSC. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Taitano?
Senator Massey, Madam Chair, I'm going to give my time to Senator Turlahi.
Senator Therese?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. All right, so I agree with the Civil Service representatives who said, you know, they don't want to be telling the agencies what to do, they want to just do it. That is their original authority, except for the recent court decision, which told them they need to get, you know, an adverse action done. And that's why we find ourselves in this predicament. And, but I, I agree. They, that's why I say I support the parts of the bill where we say they, they, they need the cooperation of these agencies, and they can enforce penalties against management that is not cooperating. And that we need to reverse this 90-day rule restriction that was imposed after the court's decision. So we are trying by statute now to reverse some implications of the court's decision. And I think that the statute of limits that we're discussing is, I, I can't find why that is a rush, actually, because that was not one of the implications of the court's decision. And when we're talking about, um, post audits, you know, this is a unique authority of the Civil Service Commission. No one else can do this, only them. So that's the only remedy for anyone else who didn't get that job or didn't get that promotion. Their sole remedy is to go to the civil service. And so we want to give them as much authority as possible, not limit that. And again, not for that one employee we feel bad. I mean, of course, we feel bad, but we're talking about a merit system where, I don't care how bad you feel about me, if I don't have that anthropology degree that is required for the job, would you want to see me get that job? I hope not. I don't think any of you want to see that. No one wants to see that. We want to have trust and faith in our government. And so that's, I'm trying to help the civil service to keep, to keep that. And when they, when it was the port who requested that a post-audit investigation be done of six employees, and the civil service found four out of the six were not qualified according to the requirements, four out of six, you know, violation of the personnel rules. It was the civil service who decided this. And so you don't have to call that corruption on the hiring person's part. I'm trying to use corruption because it could be. I don't know all the facts. Only the civil service will ever know the facts. And they don't have to call it corruption, but they did call it improper, in violation of the personnel rules. And so if it is improper, that hiring employee was never disciplined as far as I've seen in the news. And so, you know, this thing about, don't worry about corruption, it's going to be taken care of, it's not. That's the problem we are having with the government of Guam, and that's why we want to strengthen our civil service, not weaken them to a six-months time period. We want to strengthen them, that if it takes four years until we switch a governor out, or we switch two years, we switch a legislature out, or we switch a manager out, in order for people to see the truth, then so be it. I don't want to limit that. And I was wondering, you know, if I'm really out of line thinking that. But I looked at the statistics provided by the civil service on July 16, 2020. So they did an, they gave us a list of audits done from 2018 to 2020. There were 17 post-audits, only. That's what we're talking about here. This is not a huge problem in the government of Guam, but it's very costly, right? Even one case. And so at that time, uh, civil service said, on average, it took two years and 11 months for the complaint to file. Two years and 11 months on average. And so the six months would preclude most of the complaints. And in this particular case, the port had requested it be done eight months later. So even the port's request would have been precluded if we passed this statute today. Even the port could not ask for a post-audit. So I looked through the statistics even more. There's only one case here since 2018, where we're talking about decades, only one. That was about 23 years. Uh, there was a complaint made about a recruitment or promotion. One case. There was one case for five years. But, and only two complaints met that six-months timeline. Only two. 11 of them were up to three years, plus the two probably, so 13. But, uh, you know, I might not be exactly correct, but in, in general, that's my basic accounting. Yeah, we're talking about a majority of these, you know, it took up to three years to complain. And I don't want to say all these people were wrong, or that they should not seek some type of, you know, correction. It's a correction. You don't have to call it corruption, but it's a correction, and it's a, an enforcement. And we're giving civil service, by allowing them more time, enforcement tools that they can use to find justice for those who did not get hired and did not get the promotion. And that is the bulk of the people that we're, we're talking about here. And just because I can do a job, doesn't mean that I am qualified for that job. Because if it meant that, then throw those qualifications out the door and let me prove I can do any job, any job. That's the extreme we're going to end up with if we say our logic is because he's, you know, somebody showed they can do a job, that's not our merit system. That's not at all our merit system. Our merit system says you announce it, you make qualifications based on what is necessary. And if those weren't necessary, then somebody do something and throw those qualifications out. But don't say after you hire someone not qualified that that's okay. I, I'm just, you know, pleading with my colleagues, that should never be okay. And I'm wondering why is the, what is the rush? If this is the statistics we've seen from the civil service, what is the rush to pass a six-months statute of limits right now? But I do agree we need to, we need to fix, you know, fix the, what the civil service is now faced with. faced with, which is, you know, they need to be able to enforce and they need to be able to get cooperation, they need penalties, they need to get rid of that 90-day rule. I support all of those. And then there's some other things that I've suggested, why do they need, you know, we want them to do rules and regs. They want to do rules and regs, but why do they want to do a special rules and regs process that bypasses the Attorney General's office? And that was one of the amendments I had proposed, they sent a memo that says, this amendment, my amendment, I think they're talking about, I don't know, eliminates the requirement to submit rules to the legislature. I don't see why, the AAA requires AG, governor and legislature. And so I'm asking, why not just follow the regular AAA process? If I could ask the committee, I mean, the commission that. Please.
Panel. Director.
Well, that process is actually put together to try to speed up the process, but we can live with the, you know, we can live with going through the AA process.
All right, thank you.
One way we can get that move done, with or without going through the legislature.
Okay. Yeah. So I think either way, with the language in the bill or with the regular AAA, it will end up with the legislature, it's going to end up, yeah, that's what the AAA requires, is that it goes through the legislature. The other thing is, all right, now, and I want to support you that you don't want this 90-day rule to apply because it's, you know, we lose every case in that, you know, it doesn't work for this audit process. For adverse actions, yes, but for this audit process that the court has suggested you have to do an adverse action for, I was suggesting another way, that we, that we instead give, keep your original statutes that say, when you say null and void, it's null and void. And the problem you were having is that the agencies weren't, weren't doing anything about it, right? They weren't getting, saying null and void to the employees. That's the problem. And so the court gave you one way, saying do an adverse action, so now you want to do that yourself. But, you know, if you look at the court, the casework for the investigations and for the regular adverse action process, the adverse action is the bulk of your work. I mean, it, it takes up all your time. I've seen you guys sit through hours and hours of hearings and, and I just, you know, I would like you to keep that streamlined null and void process as much as possible. And so that's why I'm proposing, if there's a way by statute to streamline that as opposed to, like, just like you want to get rid of the 90-day, I want to get rid of the whole, you know, requirement to issue an adverse action notice and, or, you know, at least because, or to allow for an appeal. I want to get rid of that part. You've already determined it null and void and yet by this, you know, these amendments, you want to give them an opportunity to appeal an adverse action decision after you've declared it null and void. And I just think the original statute was so very clear, those two were distinguishable and that gave you ultimate authority. You determine it and you enforce it. And I just think we need to help you to enforce those, like you've suggested. But, but not, we don't want you declaring null and void and then the employees come to you for an appeal, you know, as opposed to, you know, when the management declares, you know, terminated and then they come to you for an appeal. You're the appeals board. And I, anyways, I, so I think we want the same things and I just, you know, think we should streamline how you're going to get there and that we should, above all, maintain our merit system as much as possible for all those employees who were bypassed. They are the ones, and as I said earlier, who do not have access to these files. I cannot tell you whether someone was hired illegally, none of us can, and it's very, very difficult. That's why we've seen so few cases of it and that's why we, you know, you hear so much about it, yet you see no real, you know, justice on it. It's, it's a difficult thing to achieve justice in this way and I want to empower you to do that. Trying to see what other comments they may. I don't think I have any more questions for this panel, Madam Speaker, unless they want to respond to any of these things, but yeah, the majority of the complaints are, were between, you know, zero to three years by far. Well, and, oh, yeah, I wanted to ask them something. So on these, on the list of complaints that we were given from 2018 to present, what was the result of, do you have any statistics on the results of these? How many of these did you say were null and void?
Would you like me to add that?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Turlai. No, I could not give you an accurate number of how much, what complaints received a null and void and which one did not, but we certainly have that information and we can get back to you with that info if you like that.
All right. I'm just curious because, yes, if you were determining many, you know, of these cases null and void, yeah, I think it's relevant. And it seems like it was relevant for the port, I don't, I don't know why, but in this case, they had been the one requesting, and I think that, I'm guessing it was because of media, you know, reports and they were trying to clear them, their name, but I don't know. But they requested it eight months after the fact and that would have not even met this timeframe. So I think we need to give management tools, we need to give co-employees tools, we need to give applicants these tools to be able to get fairness in the application and promotion process. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to commission members, to Attorney Miller, thank you very much for all your help. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Therese. Colleagues, we have completed two rounds of questionings and statements. And at this time, if there's no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and dismiss the panel or allow Senator Mary to close with her final sentiments to the panel, to the panel before I dismiss them.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, I just want to thank the panel members for making themselves available to answer questions from the, our colleagues. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, this was a measure that was done in collaboration with you to help you address those issues that made it very difficult for you to enforce your findings with regard to post-audit investigations. And I believe that it's a very simple bill that has certain, you know, more or less four points to it. And I hope that we can keep an open mind to why this is necessary just to address the problems that we have right now with the post-audit reviews, which as Attorney Miller indicated, their, their record of, or their likelihood of winning are almost nonexistent with the way the statute is written. So this was the effort to correct that so that the Civil Service Commission can in fact carry through their duty to uphold and enforce the merit protection system on Guam. And my intent with this bill is no different and really no more than that. And certainly to allay anybody's concerns, nobody was put up to this. It really was, as I do with many agencies, where a problem is identified, work with them to establish what those corrections could be that are most sensible, realistic and expedient for the agencies. And this bill 312-35 is exactly that. It is, it is a collaborative effort with CSC to help right some inequities in the law that made it difficult or impossible for CSC to enforce their orders with post-audit investigations. It's simple as that and I just want to end with that. But Sisus Maasi and Merry Christmas to all of you. I appreciate your time today. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Torres, and to the panel members, Wondukul and Sisus Maasi for being on. Merry Christmas and please be safe. We are just going to take a moment's recess as we allow the panel to leave us. We are in a moment's recess. Kimina Trentai Cinco, Nalasla Turanguahan is back from recess. At this time, it is 12:10. We will have a lunch break on the motion Assistant Majority Leader to come back at
I motioned that we recess until 1:00 P.M.
We are on lunch till 1:00 P.M.